Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Whitley County Council Meeting of December 7th, 2021. First item on the business today is to honor our country with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please stand and join us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on nation, under God, and the peaceful, liberty, and justice for all.
Sheriff Gatten, please. And if you would, I know we have a lot on the agenda and some people that aren't normally here, but the protocol is to please come forward to the open seat where the microphone is. Introduce yourself and then go right into your item of business.
Morning, Mark Gatton with the county chair. I was on for two things. I'm just going to do the request today after talking with a bunch of, or I guess all of you. Some of the guys would like to come over and also speak with you, and I thought today wasn't going to be the best day since it's so busy today, so I'll come back.
And then that's been transferred? It's farther back, yeah. Additional appropriations is what you're looking for?
So it's actually a reduction resolution and then an additional appropriation resolution, so.
There should be five requests for reduction appropriation of funds to the budget.
Yep, and I'm seeing one from line item 1,000. Well, ending. Yeah.
Yeah. So the first five I'm requesting, one would be from a dispatcher's line of 1,200, another dispatcher line of 1,200, another dispatcher line of 8,000, overtime of 5,000, and holiday of 5,000. And we're requesting that be moved out and taken over to the jail budget and put into the meal money to finish the year out.
That won't leave you short in the five items?
Correct. We have enough to take it out, transfer it over. So that total amount of those appropriations we transferred over is $20,400.
Mr. Chair, can we do these as a single item?
Yes, we can.
Then I would move that we allow the reduction of these five items and then the reappropriation to the jails personnel services.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, please. Hearing none will go to the vote. All is in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members present.
The next one I have is a request for transfer of funds within the department budget. These are all out of the 0132, the 1,700 from a confinement officer line item, 3,500 from the head cook line item, and then 4,900, 1,900, 100, 2,100, and 13,400, all out of confinement officers, different line items. And all that would be transferred over to the meals also. And we had excess. Everybody knows the problems we've had with keeping the jail staff, so when we have open slots, the money sits there. That's why we have some of that money in those items.
The, why, how did the meals come up that much, that short, Mark?
One, the price of meals, of course, food went up, so we're short there. And Jody, we've been short on meals. Yeah, we've never increased the line item, just try to keep the budget and try to transfer it over at the end of the year here.
Oh, so we already signed it? We better approve it then, we're already signed it.
Well, that was the extra sheet we got, the 6,000.
Yes. So we can stop that one now. I thought that that one was a reduction and the other one was the transfer, but that was actually the one that we're talking about right now also, so that one's being passed over. So I will entertain a motion. We can just keep moving here.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will go to the vote. All is in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members present.
My next request for transfer of funds within a department budget would be taking 10,000 that's left in utilities and moving it over to janitorial supplies.
Are you short on supplies this year? Just going to stock up on some stuff going into next year?
We're not as stocked as we usually are, just because of obtaining the cleaning products has become harder, so I wouldn't call it a true stock up for next year, but we'll have some in the suppliers and parts of this.
Second. Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will go to the vote. All is in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same, and let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members present.
The next is a request for transfer within same series of counts. It would be $2,200 from a dispatcher's line item over to $2,000 being put into holiday pay to finish up the year.
So move.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will go to the vote. All is in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members present.
And then there's one more. I don't know, did they get it in? Tiffy, the one that was actually that wrong? Put on the wrong form. So requesting to move $6,300 from the garage fund over to put that 6,300 into uniform line item.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will go to the vote. All is in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same, let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members present.
Thank you.
Scott Wagner, please.
Morning, Scott Wagner, health department director. Actually, I have three items of business. Funds transfer 2020, 2021, we didn't increase per for FISA. That's why you came last year and this year to transfer that amount of money there to cover those two. 2022, we did increase that budget, so we should make that.
So you're taking money from other services, environmental healthcare, capital improvements, and contracted services?
Yes.
Were there any capital improvement projects that did not get accomplished this year, or why would there have been that amount left in there?
Because we started with the Schneider project later, building department, I are doing Schneider for our permitting system. We started that, so we could use all that funds.
And then the contracted services?
Well, that's what I meant, contracted services. The other improvement was the truck that was purchased for this year.
Okay, so that.
We used all the money for that truck.
Okay.
We allotted 40, we only spent 31.
Well, it's tremendous. We appreciate that.
Make a motion to approve the transfer.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion, please? Hearing none will go to the vote. All is in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members present.
The second item was to talk to you about WIC. Just to let you guys know that in October, the health board voted to drop their sponsorship of WIC, which resides in our building. So right now, community health of Fort Wayne has taken up that sponsorship. We're ready to take that and say it's approved that. They also do clinics in Helen County, Louisville, and Cal. So they'll be taking over that sponsorship. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with the director and start the idea of transition out of our building, just so you're aware of the situation.
Will there be a Whitley County location that they would be?
Correct. It'll be most likely in Columbia City. WIC is not going to go away, but will still be here in Columbia City. Just local government will not sponsor that. As you all know, well, we're getting to the point where the state is not willing to pay what those services are needed in the county. And we're coming to the point where we would need county money to support that federal program. And so the health department voted to change that up. We, this place have to reapply, but most likely they will. That would be my number one priority in exchange. They have not been told that yet. That will be today. Any other questions on that? Last item of this is for additional compensation for myself for hours worked overtime. Obviously, I'm exempted and not entitled to any of that. I was given the idea to come forward to do that, so presented that to you guys and do it for two months.
George, do we have any of that money left? Did we get the money from the state on COVID?
Yeah, we did. We got, I think we got half of that money was 3.2 million is all we got. We haven't touched that, but I think.
We have grant money already in place. They already have compensation of addition.
So you got that?
Yes, we received a secret from the work that we did as a health department in 2020. We put in 1,200 hours of COVID work between three of us. And we were able to receive a grant of 110,000 for that, and that grant specifically allows for additional compensation beyond normal working hours.
So you need council's approval to do that, or?
Need council's approval to pay, change the salary ordinance to allow me to be paid additional funds.
Well, this, this overtime, since you're on salary, correct? Does it affect anyone else in the health department?
The two ladies that also also did overtime work, exempted employees, they've already taken their time. They chose to take additional time instead of compensation.
Correct.
I already had at the time over 1,000 hours of PTO, so I didn't think that would help me at all, so.
And you might have said it, Scott. What's, do you know the total?
No, that was given up to you guys as a discretion of what you want to do. I wrote in there, I can't remember what the number was.
5971.
That was just straight time. If you were to take my hourly wage, that's just straight time, but that's just a suggestion, not asking for that specifically.
But I have two concerns. First, I would have preferred that the Board of Health step out there and put a dollar amount on it that they would request. But they have not. And the other is, we need to make it clear if we were to do this, that this is not a bonus. This is because of an exceptional time in our history where exceptional efforts were needed beyond anything we've experienced in the past and hope to experience in the future. There are other people that worked additional hours that are not eligible for compensation, but I'm not aware of anyone to the degree that you did. And no one who's board or other group has put them forth. So. Do you happen to know how much is available in that grant?
Still over $100,000.
Okay, so that's not a grant that we will lose if we don't spend it.
That is ours to use.
And break it down for me again, if you would, please, the number of extra time that you put in and when, how you figured your rate of pay and what you requested.
So starting in the middle of January, so I think it was on January 14th through May, through the end of May, I did 166 extra hours more time. So that's hours every week beyond 37 and a half.
Can you figure that at what rate, please?
I do believe my salary rate is 36.2 cents.
What it shows here. Figure straight time is acceptable to you?
Yes, sir. I believe it's like, Mr. Comfort said, this is an unusual circumstance, new time. I've been here for 25 years. I never asked for that. I always do overtime every year, no matter what, but that was a lot of overtime for a short period of time, so that's why.
As we go forward, Scott, it seems like this is not going away by this. I mean, the sickness is not going away. Do you see that you might be spending more time?
Well, I think that will continue into next year for sure. We have gone down and done less number of hours because most people have both their vaccinations. And so what we've been doing since August is just the third vaccination. So we're not putting in as many hours for that. Could it happen again, or something else happens, or we have to ramp up? It could. We, more, and I just can't say that it won't happen, that there comes a huge need and something else happens, and now we got a new shot or a new pill, and we gotta do services. My only concern is we are wearing out our volunteers. We only have on basis four nurses that come in to help with that, and they've been doing this since August, and I'm worried that we're gonna wear them out, even though it's once a week. They've been retired, you know, they're just doing the good of the goodness of their heart to do that, so. Yeah, I, I think that it could happen. I, like I said, given the last 25 years, even with H1N1, it wasn't that heavy, so hopefully not. I would hope that I could have more volunteers, so I don't have to be there every day to do that. So that's my hope is that going forward, we can better plan that.
So I kind of have to agree with Tim here that, you know, just because you got that grant list, I would want it to be, you know, a kind of an open open book thing. I just, you know, I, I would think you'd want to see that back and keep it for other days, but I see your point, you know, not knowing what, what might be coming, so.
Has the Board of Health made any action for recognizing these volunteers?
Yes, we, we gave them a birthday, Christmas, have celebration at, or just been, no. At the end of May, June, we did that celebration for them. So we did a lunch in, got them some mementos, like a tubular with their name on it, things like that, a gift certificate, things like that. Just to say thank you for that. They were all very appreciative of that time.
Now, Mr. Chair, just to move forward, I would make a motion that we do this one-time additional payment from the
Safety Grant.
Safety Grant of, and make that payment for $6,000 to Scott Wagner.
Second. Further discussion?
I'm just like the rest of them. I want to make sure this is a one-time payment, and we, I appreciate everything you've done for Whitley County and the residents, but, you know, I want to make sure, you know, everybody understands this is a one-time deal.
Well, and essentially, it's never really a one-time deal because he can come back to us at any time.
Right.
That's going to determine.
Yeah.
Be determined by this, by this council, but I, I, I understand what you're saying as far as.
If the pandemic happens to worsen, if things go the other way, then we'll look at it again.
I just would commend you for your extraordinary efforts through that time. Everyone did their very best to get us through difficult times, but you really stepped up beyond. Thank you. I would accept that amendment.
Was that, is that a true statement? Because I, I guess I didn't follow that.
They did vote to bring this action forward to the council.
So they recognize, and that's essentially your boss?
Yes.
Or they set your direction? That's, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, you, you've done above and beyond, but I struggle a little bit with the fact that that's your department and and you're kind of asking for your raise or your bonus, so I, I struggle with that. But I don't question the fact that you put in that time and you put in that dedication and that you worked hard for the people of Whitley County. And those funds are not tax dollars. So.
And because it is the recommendation of the health department.
And because it is, yes, exactly. Any further discussion? Hearing none will go to the vote. All is in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members present.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any other questions for me, COVID or anything?
So are we in the red now, right here?
We have been in red for, it'll be three weeks this coming week. There is quite a bit of sickness out there. I myself was in the hospital several weeks ago when I was, I waited seven hours for a bed to be emitted. The time I was there, they had at least 50 plus people waiting for beds every day. It's part of the usual. There's all, there's a lot. Not as many kids as before, like we saw in August, not a lot of deaths, but still a little bit of illness going on. I, I see this going into January, hopefully slowing down in springtime. All depends on variants and things like that.
And are the regional hospitals able to test for the variant?
So what they do, they just do random sampling of that, and they sent that to the state where the state does the DNA labs on that. When you just hear the word PCR, that's what they're doing there. They're taking the DNA and separating that out, so they're able to see which matches what variant at that point. Still Delta's prominent here. Indiana hasn't seen their first case yet. It's just a matter of days that we wait. So supposedly, the Omicron variant is more mild. If that's the case, we may see a quicker end to some of this because that means the transfer may happen more rapidly, but there's less illness, so a bit less hospitalizations. And that way, people are getting more immunity faster.
So likely more people will be sick, but not as sick.
We're hoping that's the case, yes. Thank you once again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott. Next time on the agenda is Dale Book, but I'm not seeing Dale's or anyone here to speak. Yes, come right forward, please, and introduce yourself.
I'm Kennedy Sackers for EDC. I have Jason, the CEO of Chrome Source, and I receive the CFP from Chrome Source. And we sent over a memo, or Daleville, I should say, for a abatement for a project with an investment of $543,000. And I will let Chrome Source entertain any questions about that. I will say that Chrome Source is one of our largest employers of the county. They are just outside that top ten ranking for us, and they have done wonderful things for their employees and the continuation of their work. So they will entertain any questions about their project or what's going on here.
Great. Well, tell us about the project and number of employees, wages, and so forth that you hope to accomplish here.
It's here last, around this time last year, I put this building, it was really a big cost, US 30s, we proceeded to improve this building. That's where this case is for loans will be through Sherwin-Williams, Mousar, our customers, Sherwin-Williams. The distribution of retail is at loans. So it's a fulfillment endeavor where we will hold finished goods. We're doing a new color system of those stores back in all of the United States and Canada. Just shy of 2,000 stores in person. We, we are the main, we're the only provider of this color system. We have other parts, chips that are being fulfilled at this building. It'll begin in January, we're hopeful. We've been working on the production side of it since about May, we're wrapping it up. So we have the job done, completed, and becomes fulfillment. So when someone consumes a chip, when a pocket is out at a store, the store rep will order her punishment for this. There will be about 500 daily orders. I think it will require in the beginning around 15 people, but it could grow to 30. We've been growing rapidly. There's a big push, not just in fulfillment to retail, but DIY based due to COVID. People don't want to go into the stores, but they want to work color samples and come to deliver to home. So we've been doing that as well. We pull these chips, package them, ship them directly to the city, and that started with your COVID. GTB loans, Mousar loans are doing, some of those projects can end up, this is the whole country, you can have 4,000 orders a day. We haven't really gotten into that yet to a full extent, but we do it for the Sherwin-Williams store side. Other division will be related to this project, but we will get 3,500 orders in a day frequently. A lot of people want their color samples delivered directly to them. That's going to be something that grows in this new building. So the number of headcount in terms of people that are. 50 people, but right now, I think 15 people. For the next year, that's, I think, is reasonable. State, we're going to have 50 people. I think it'll be around 15. Wages pressures are on with Amazon coming into play. It's going to be a different world for us, competing with Amazon. You know, they do fulfillment, that's what we do. So I'm increasing our wages pretty aggressively. But my customers don't want to pay more, so it's a little, it's a little tough. It's where I have appealing for this to help us because Amazon's a real threat to me. And we've been in the labor base, we're not like people with Amazon, like we kind of do now. Like or not, we're going to be competing with Amazon. This is mercy being received. I want to start seeing some of these meetings. I may not be involved in a future meeting.
I'm not sure, for the first time you were here, I'm not sure what all you talked about, but we have made financial assets. We're going to be like the wrapping for, it was basically an empty shell, a warehouse. For the previous owner, we've had to completely remake this a primary pick location, five base high. But yeah, so the one half will be primary pick, the other one will be bulk storage, so that way we can refill the main primary pick locations that we also need. And then forklifts, things like that, that will have to be purchased in addition to our main warehouse to have over there the whole time. We also did purchase a little box truck in hopes that we have a main box truck, but you have to have your CDL. And now that we are fulfilling to our own warehouse across the street, we did have to purchase another truck that kind of helped make those runs to fill in the new warehouse. That's it. That's all I have.
The numbers indicate that it helps the county tax base almost immediately, and I appreciate that. It is personal property that we're, you're requesting the abatement on. It is personal property that we're, you're requesting the abatement on. How long is this contract? Because this is a 10-year abatement.
The contract is only two years. Filling it never stops and they won't move. The, the previous producer, the manufacturer of the Lowe's system, they made it for about 25 years. They never changed it. We were just awarded this new production. I'm told by my customer. Once we, once we make these changes and we grant you this work, it's not something that they shop out of. And it really, we're the manufacturer of it in the main facility. And then we move the material to the distribution center. We used to ship it to a company in Columbus, Ohio, Vectra, which I bought last year. They, Vectra's out of the picture. So all of the product is staying in good account. I can't see them. I'll just renew that two-year. Sherwin-Williams would never agree to anything, usually never more than a year. So two was exceptional. I can't see them changing.
So when Lowe's decides to do a reset based on style.
Yeah.
That's not necessarily going to impact your business in four to five years.
They're just doing the reset now. The last thing they did it was about 18 years ago.
Okay.
So they don't change, once they do something in retail, Lowe's anyway, they can stick with it. And it's a beautiful system that's coming out. They won't change it.
No one can predict the future.
The money they're spending on it, they won't do it again.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, the only question I have for you is good luck with $16 an hour.
I know.
Because it's tough. But thank, thank you all for what you bring to Whitley County. Really appreciate it.
Once you get into the hiring process on that, how do you treat your veterans that come in and that are employed?
We certainly hire them. Yeah. Not close anyway. Yeah, if they come through the door.
But that's probably anybody that comes through the door right now.
Yeah. I think the last time I was here last year, it was 60 people, we were 189. All through last year, we needed to hire multiple. Yeah, so we've got a lot of, a lot of work ourselves.
And to put in a plug for a local organization now, Ivy Tech would probably make an arrangement with you.
I did just start.
And we are offering, they are offering courses here in Slumby City.
This resolution number would be titled 2021-11, please. Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown as passed unanimously with all board members present.
Thank you.
Mark Sternman, please.
Mark Sternman, Maintenance for Whitley County. I'm here requesting the transfer of funds from County General back to the account number to the building to make, building repairs and maintenance. This is the, there was some damage to the garage gate here at the government center and the entity that ends it paid for the repairs. And then I guess that money went back into County General. I'm just asking that it can put back into my account. Where the money was spent to repair the gate.
I'm not following your mark. So you paid to have it fixed and then they paid you, but that money went into County General?
Yes.
Okay. And that amounts $220.19?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve, pay and mark the 220.19.
From the County General back to equipment repairs. How's your equipment repairs budget right now through the end of the year?
It's going to be tight. We're going to use it.
How much is in it?
I'm not sure what it is right now. We have some expenses that are still pending, yet we're finishing up quite a few projects. We should wrap up by the end of the year.
So you have $12,916 in there right now? Does that sound about right?
Right.
And what are your projects?
We're finishing up quite a few upgrades in the courthouse, the lighting, the electrical room, and we're making a employee break room in one of the spare rooms that we have there, so.
So do you anticipate encumbering any of that money into January, or will that all, will there be anything left there that'll go back into the general fund?
There may be a little bit, but not much. We're going to.
Maybe $220.19?
We hope to have it all finished this year.
I would just like to commend you on how frugal you've been, that your folks are doing the work over there at the county building. It looks good. It looks original.
Yeah, invite you all, give me a couple of weeks and invite you all to come over and take a look and see what we've done. I think you'll be pleased. I'd like a motion to approve the transfer.
You got a motion on the floor, Chairman?
Yep. We were in discussion. Appreciate that. It's further discussion. Is there any further discussion? This time then we'll go to the vote halls in favor. Please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown as passed unanimously with all members present. Personnel committee recommendations, please.
Personnel committee met October the 25th. And the first recommendation is regarding a building and planning reclassification request. This is reclassification from a COMAT 3 to a COMAT 2 based on WIS's recommendation. Job description was sent to WIS. It was not an accurate job description in totality, so it was resent. And Personnel Committee gave a favorable yes to turning this to a COMAT 2 position based on the WIS recommendation. Second issue is regarding the probation department salaries. Probation department salaries are set by the state.
Can I interrupt you? Do you think it would be better to address each one of these as we go, or do you want to go through all of them?
Make a motion to accept them.
I think it would probably keep it a little bit cleaner.
All right. So I move the reclassification from COMAT 3 to COMAT 2 for the position in the building and planning.
I make a motion next.
I have a motion.
I have a motion next.
So I have a motion a second. Any further discussion, please? What would be the difference in that change?
Less than $3,000, I believe. I don't know the number off the top of my head. But it's, Gorustic, he was keeping in line with our decision to follow WIS's recommendations. And when the job description was changed and was corrected, this is where it fell. But Jennifer, do you have anything to add?
Well, as close as we are to the end of the cycle, I think it would be appropriate for it to be a first of the first pay period of the next budgetary cycle.
Yeah, I would amend my motion to that effect. That the, that it begin at the first pay period of the 2021 cycle.
Any further discussion?
22.
22, pardon me.
Hang in there.
Any further discussion, please? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, and let it be shown as passed unanimously with all board members present.
Second item, the probation department salaries are set by the state. And their COLA or cost of living is also set by the state. And it has typically been at variance with what we have done here at the county. So ultimately what the Personnel Committee advises is that we continue to only do the COLA based on the state recommendations and not tie it to the COLA within the county. That could have the effect of double increases if we, they also got, for example, the 2% this year. Or if we were there are years that they have gotten a significantly larger percentage than what we have. And we don't want it to double up because we couldn't reduce it in the years that the state's significantly greater than ours.
Is that a motion, sir?
I would put that in the form of a motion. That the, that the probation department salaries and cost of living remain as the state prescribes without involvement in the county COLA process.
We've been giving them both, so it's.
It's a change.
And going back, we did look back a few years to see what the average was and it all seemed to balance. More or less, more or less. Well, I would second.
I have a motion in a second. The floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, and let it be shown as passed unanimously with all board members present.
Third item was a new position request for a part-time lactation consultant. Scott in the Health Department made a presentation that ties this to the change in the WIC program going out of the county. There is an individual who has worked for the county that is overqualified to go with WIC. But it's still necessary in the process for this to be coordinated together. County and WIC are going to work hand in hand because moms need the information. And county gets the information about the moms to pass on to WIC. So this is a 12-hour part-time position for someone who has already been employed by the county. There has been some word that this position is as an assistant to another person in the Health Department. That's not accurate. They will at times assist that person when the workload allows, that allow their time to be fully utilized. And I make a motion that we approve this new part-time position for lactation consultant in the Health Department. They've got a favorable pass from the Personnel Committee.
In addition to the description of what this person does, she does have access to go in and meet with the mothers at the hospital, which they couldn't be before.
What's that pay rate, please?
$20. $20 an hour.
12 hours, 12 hours a week.
And that's paid out of the grant money?
Paid out of grant.
So I'm going to assume then by your presentation that that is a motion?
It is a motion, and I would note that it's already being paid that, correct? Do you want to explain that to us, Scott?
Yeah, somehow the cart got me with the horse on this. Um, we do have a grant that every year that we get, it's something that will go away. It's an annual grant. And this is an order like Mr. Comfort said, to call Danielle Anderson, who's been our lactation consultant, she's been counted for 16 years. Yep. She's the reason why we have a number one program in the state for initial breastfeeding compliance. She's won USDA awards for her work here. And what has happened is USDA has taken back, because she doesn't have a bachelor's degree. They scroll back her work in WIC to where she can't do what she's done for the last 16 years. And by grabbing her and keeping her at the Health Department, she can do, use her certifications now in the county. So she's able to go to the hospital and meet with new moms before the release and all that stuff where she couldn't do that with WIC before. So it only expands the availability for her to get out of the community and bring those people into the program and also help WIC as well, so. And so the initial amount was $20 an hour. I think it does fit with the COMAT 2 position. I do believe it's within that same range there.
Because it's part-time.
Yes.
That doesn't directly apply. And I would note that some people think that WIC is just for low-income families, but it's low and moderate. Would you have a guess as to how many families are recipients?
We have anywhere from an average of 380 to 490 people throughout the year. It varies on the time of year. They also do work with the farmer's market and give them out checks for vegetables and fruits and things like that through the farmer's market as well. So very active program. So there are quite a few families affected. Obviously, sometimes they're harder, there's more. Sometimes they're nicer, there's less economics of the county, so. But Danielle's been great. She's done wonderful things and she just was able to continue her position with WIC. And so that's why we wanted to grab her before we lost her to somebody else, so.
And do you have a date that she has started? So we can get that.
I thought it was.
Started being paid at that.
That was October 1st, when, I think that's when she started.
I believe so.
Yes.
So you're asking us to prove that retroactively?
I guess.
We're certainly not going to.
Take the kings away.
And we had already transferred money from the existing grant to cover her on that. So that money, she's being paid right now, was from a grant, so.
I have a motion.
Is there a second, please?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown as passed unanimously with all board members present.
Just an additional note, it has been reviewed or dropped or something reviewed by WIS. And whenever you guys get the bill sent.
Very good. Yep. And you have one other item, or is that a non-item?
I would call it a non-item because we have no recommendation.
Okay.
If it needs to be discussed, it can be discussed in the future.
Very good. All right, now we're to the point, we're going to do year-end transfers and additional appropriations.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do another time. Judge Paul, please.
My goodness, everyone. Judge Paul Willie Spirit Court. I'm asking to move some money, transfer some money. If I'm out of the office, there's three things that can happen with the court. We can either shut the court down and not have any hearings. I can get a senior judge, which. I can get a senior judge, which I'm allotted a certain number by the state each year. Or I can have a local attorney serve as a pro temp. And they serve basically at my convenience when I ask them as a favor, and they get a whopping $25 per day when they do that. So it's kind of community service for the lawyers, but it helps keep the system moving forward. And with the operational tempo that we've had in Superior Court, shutting the court down is really a non-issue. You can't do that. And this past year, we have, Judge Rush has not been available to serve as a senior judge. So I rely primarily on Judge Hewer and then Judge Wallace, Senior Judge Wallace coming down from DeKalb County, but he's relatively limited. So what I've been doing is relying a lot more on my, my pro temps. Local attorneys will come in that don't have a conflict with the case, primarily to keep the criminal cases moving, so we don't have a constitutional issue. In this past year, what we've had is, I'm a military, now that I'm a military judge, I have three weeks of military training, so I'm going an extra week. And then I decided to have a really good time, and I picked up COVID. And so I was out for about a little over a week and a half, almost two weeks. So what that hap, what happened is we've used up the funds in that pro temp budget. So what I'm just asking for is my contracted services budget. I moved $500 over just to cover the costs of those pro temps. Those attorneys, they get their $25 to cover for me. It's not a significant transfer, but it just needed to make sure, because we're doing different items, that we do that. As far as contracted services, that would be my interpreters. It would also be psychological evaluations. Fortunately, this year, we've only had one psychological evaluation required, so I've got a little extra money in that budget. So I can move, I'm asking to move that money from contracted services over to the senior pro temp slot.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
I have one question. The $25 day, who comes up with that?
I, the Supreme Court came up with that, and it's, for some reason, it's been that way for probably, well, I've been practicing almost 30 years. It's been that way from day one.
Well, I mean, just everything, the economy, everything, this whole world, and you've got $25.
I think the main thing is, it's just, it's, it's really community service for the attorneys. We all agree that if I want my case to move, then I've got to do my time to help out the bench. And it covers maybe lunch or mileage to drive over to the court. So it's really, it's not designed to be a moneymaker, because then that would perhaps cause somebody to do it for the wrong reasons. It's mostly just to reimburse incidental expenses. And I've never had a situation where I've used it all before. So it was a little different this year.
Thank you. Anything further, please? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members, or all council members present.
Thank you. Thank you all. Have a great holidays.
Cindy Doolittle, please. Who's on that?
Cindy Doolittle Clark. I am requesting, I actually forgot my paper. So I am requesting for money to come out of, I believe it is my supply fund, to go into my election conference budget. The reason why is when I set the budget for 2021, there was no election this year. So my, the cost, I mean, I think I had $2,000 in my election budget. This summer, the girls went to the Indiana Vote Registration Conference to get all the updates on that. So we used a lot of that out of that at that time. So the election conference is coming up next week, and there, there was five of us going, and now there's four of us going. But I had forgotten about this because it doesn't happen that often. But by law, if the county election board, which is our Democrat representative and our Republican representative want to go, the county has to pay for it. And both of them requested to go this year, so I was short. And we did have one back out. I'm planning on using for the girls in the office and myself, money out of my clerk budget for the conferences. But my election board that's going, I want it to be paid out of the actual election budget because in case State Board of Accounts audit me, it is clean and it's, because that's all she does is election board. So that's what I'm requesting, just to be able to cover for the conference.
New motion, transfer of $700 twice.
A motion in a second, any further discussion, please? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all members present. Nathan Bilger, please.
Good morning. Requesting two transfers from the salaries to the the two different line items. The smaller of the amounts is a transfer to professional services, which is primarily our client commission and BGA attorney. Had enlisted those services a little bit more heavily than we expected this year for various reasons. And the larger amount is transferring from the which line item is that the building inspector, thank you, building inspector, which was funded for the entire year, but the position was not hired until halfway through the year. So those funds would be transferred to the equipment line item in anticipation of outfitting the basement meeting rooms with video. A few years ago, they had been outfitted with TV screens and audio, but cameras had not been installed due to cost. And last year, we had gotten a quote for doing that in anticipation of using COVID dollars. But those were spent elsewhere, and so still would like to do that. Broadcasting meetings has become pretty popular, and we're the main department that uses that meeting room. However, the equipment would be available for others as well. Thank you.
Transfer to bullet inspector and part-time to equipment program maintenance and professional services.
Second.
One motion in a second. Further discussion, please? Nathan, I think it's important that I ask this question. $18,000 is quite a bit of money to have left over in account, so that kind of makes it look like we're not doing our job setting your budget. If you get that much extra money, so just explain to everyone why there's $18,000 there that can be transferred.
Right. The, both the part-time budget and building inspector budget were set for positions. They were not hired. They were set for the entire year. They were adjusted for the entire year of salaries. They were not hired until approximately May and June. And so that's why half of those line items are left over at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Won't happen next year.
Any further discussion, please? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same, and let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all council members present. Thank you. Danny Tippman is next. Is there someone here to speak on this for, please?
So she did send an email. She had one of her employees that was sick, and we had to graciously donate PTO to that individual. Unfortunately, that means that Dani has to pay that money out of her budget, and she obviously didn't know that. So this is just moving from a couple of different line items to her part-time budget to cover this employee's PTO that was donated from another department.
So we have two transfer resolutions here. One will be for the transfer of $250 from telephone, internet, and security into personal part-time. And the other one will be for $750 from printing to the personnel part-time. Is there a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. It's up to transfer first.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, does this cover FICA?
I'm assuming it covers everything that she's needing.
Thank you.
Anything else, please? Hearing nothing, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, and again, let it be shown that it was passed unanimously with all council members present. Is there someone here to speak for Amy Modder, please?
She did email me this morning and just wanted to let you guys know she's not feeling well today, so she won't be in. But this transfer is to cover for juvenile user fees. She did not appropriate Medicare for her few followers. So she's transferring $100 to cover that.
It's being transferred from 30012, and can you tell us what that is, please?
Other services.
Other. Is there a motion for the transfer of the $100 for probation, please? I move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same, and let it be shown again that it was passed unanimously with all board members, with all council members present. Lindsay Grossnickel here, please.
She had sent an email with her reason. I was just to help cover alternatives to my budget.
She's requesting to move $600 from supplies to professional services. She indicates it to compare, the need for the mileage was greater than anticipated, self-place, now operates countywide, and thus the travel for outreach and education is greater than the original anticipated. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, please? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same, and let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all council members present. George, commissioners, please.
Okay, we've just got a few transfers that we have here from FICA, supplies, worker's comp insurance, legal services, postage, and website. We'd like to transfer for our liability and property insurance, $75,000. And the reason for that is that a lot of times on the liability and property insurance, we have to guess there's, we do have additional expenses when there are lawsuits that come our way, that we have additional expenses to take care of on that. IT services was $147,000. There were a lot more. We did a lot more cyber work than, than we have for a long time for the simple fact that we're trying to make sure that we've got everything covered as far as our IT services and cyber. We are looking at doing something different with IT services at this point, because I think we're into the close to $300,000 range for our IT services total. So that's going to be in consideration for next year. Consultant engineering, $5,100, and then telephone, $1,000. So we have money to transfer.
George, that IT services, that $300,000 include all the security services that are constantly increasing?
Yes. But we're looking at other options at this point also. So I ask for your approval, the transfer.
Is there a motion?
I move that we allow these transfers.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? George, the only question I would have is that all the places that you're transferring from all make sense to me, except for postage, $20,000. How, can you explain why is there so much in that account?
We don't really control that. We, it comes from the clerk's office and the auditor's office. They have the postage, and we just, we've been, evidently, they're not using as much as they, they did before. But we normally have about $50,000 in that account, and it just wasn't used.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? We'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, and let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all council members present.
Okay, so then the rest is additional appropriations. And the first one, you guys have already approved. It was 3,120 for the Health Department. We just never had the form here, I guess, for you guys to sign.
So that was told to come back for consideration, or we actually voted on it?
Yes, it was already voted on. She just didn't have, she had this to cover. The $3,000 was for Dani, I'll correct. 3120.
And then what's the other 3124, please?
I just think that the format's the same.
Okay, I wanted to make sure we were looking at the same thing, because the numbers are different, or the format's different.
It's already been voted on. You just need to appropriate it now.
So we approved it. Now we're doing an additional appropriation. Is there a motion, please? For the additional appropriation of $3,120.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same, and let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all council members present.
Kind of along the same line, this is for the purchase of the land for the jail. Again, we already voted on it, but this is appropriating the months.
Additional appropriation, request of $349,960.70.
I move we approve the appropriation.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Opposed the same, and let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all council members present.
Next is Paula. I don't know if you would like to.
Paula Warden, we finally get, call someone for. Paula Warden, come on down.
Paula Warden, I'm the Director of Community Corrections. Additional appropriations that you, in front of you, are not county general funds. Once we were out of the red and user fees, I submitted a grant amendment to allow me to start paying overtime. And as we reopen and call part-time back, there are benefits, and we just were processed to the user fund. Like I said, I didn't receive approval from that Department of Corrections to report of using those funds. So now I just need to amend my budget with you.
We just need a motion for that?
Yeah, there's two actually additional appropriations.
Yeah, and the second one is our community transition fund. That fund is, just as a reminder, really no way to predict how much we're going to generate. It depends how many offenders we receive from the Department of Corrections. And they serve the remaining portion of their DOC sentence under our supervision. So we did receive more funds than projected, so we're allowed to pay some operating expenses out of that fund as well.
So the first one is going to be from part-time, from work shift supervisor, work release supervisor, FICA Medicare and Retirement perf, to personal services for $108,340.93. And the second one will be for $5,000 from supplies. Where's that $5,000 going, Paula?
It goes.
It's going into supplies. Where is coming, it's coming from the community.
It's.
From the transition, okay.
You want to do most same time or something?
However, you'd like to form your motion.
I make a motion, we.
To make a motion, we accept both appropriations. Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion, please? Hearing none.
Quick question.
I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Just for clarity, you've got a significant amount of money budget from County General this last year.
Yes.
And you do not plan then to use all of those funds because you have received.
Well, you would ask me that during our meeting, and I feel like I couldn't really present that actual number until the end of the fiscal year. So I do plan including that in the annual report as far as projection versus actual expenses out of County General because we are now paying a lot of those fees or costs through user fees. But I definitely will provide you with that number. Yeah, it's right now, I'm hoping, obviously I reduced my original ask for 2022 significantly. I think I went from 500,000 to 200 some thousand. I don't think I'll be able to reduce it any more than that in 2022, but hopefully in 2023 as well.
But you received more user fees in 2021 than you anticipated when you budgeted.
Yes, absolutely.
Anything else, please? Go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same. And let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all council members present.
Merry Christmas.
So there's an additional or there's an appropriation reduction of $500,000 from the commissioner's budget to personal services. For the group insurance. Any questions of George on that?
Just, excuse me, could you explain again how that's accomplished?
Well, basically, we have a trust fund that we, we're self insured in our insurance. We have a trust fund. So all the, our payments go into this trust fund and then the payments for services go out of that trust fund. We, we've been very fortunate. Most of our employees, employees have been very good about not going to the hospitals and regulars rooms. Been very healthy. We've got young employees now from what we had before, a lot of younger ones. So our trust fund has been building up. And out of that trust fund, we've decided with the commission, with the council to go ahead and pay our payments out of this trust fund. So we, this year, we've been able to pay over $500,000 just out of the trust fund, which saves County General.
Thank you to the county employees who were on the program.
That's right.
Is the wellness program having a measurable impact?
I honestly couldn't tell you. I'm sure it does. There's got to be help there. But we also, we pay to have, our insurance company will actually call if somebody isn't using their pills, if they aren't taking their pills and reordering. So we've, we've taken on ourselves to make sure our insurance company is working with us as much as possible on that too. But I think that's helped because they're very proactive on diabetes. And that's a big expense.
Is there a motion, please?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same. And let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all council members present. Very good. Just George, I will get you on the spot. Go ahead with your commissioner report, please.
Okay, just got a few things. Commissioners are asking right now for your approval to use Region 3A again for our grant services. We had used Region 3A probably about five or six years ago for our grant services. But they were having a lot of issues with their administration, their administrative for being changed every, every year. We've been working closely with Region 3A right now to see how they're doing. They're, they're working with a lot of the different counties right now and, and providing them with some good grant services. And so we've decided, the commissioners have decided to bring it to the council to get your approval. I think it's $13,300 a year, but we're paying that right now with our grant writer. We've got a grant writer that we've got on a monthly retainer, which would actually save us money because we would be using Region 3A and our Economic Development Corporation would be able to use Region 3A at the same time. They're paying for grant services too. So it's really, it's going to be a cost saving, but we're, we're asking for your, your approval to expend that $13,300 for next year.
And George, that's a membership?
Yes.
Which then affords us as members the grant services?
Jim is a representative for the council and then we're, Chad Banks is also our representative for the commissioners.
We got, we backed out of that, or the county backed out for several years because they didn't like the way it was running. So they've changed leadership now and.
Yeah, it, it's really.
It's back on course where it shouldn't.
And I think the smaller communities, Larwell, Chabasco and that, I think there's programs that can help those housing and things like that that Region 3A can help get. But yes, different leadership.
They even do traffic counts and a lot of different things for the communities. That's, since they've, they've changed their administration, it's, it's a lot better.
So have the smaller communities gone back, utilizing?
Yes.
Several counties. I mean, they cover several.
So do you need a motion or are you just asking for the blessing or what?
Well, I think at this point, we're just asking for your blessings so we can go forward and put that in our budget for next year or for, well, we'll probably ask for additional later on that or we can probably take it out of the seat of budget for next year.
So you don't need funds in this?
And that's probably what we'll do is just take it out of the seat of budget for next year and then provide in the budget for 2023. We'll put it in the budget for 23.
If three of you agree on, we need to move back in that direction. I stick with your decision.
I'm going to be against it. I don't think that's a wise expenditure of dollars, but that's just the way I feel. So.
Well, I guess what we were looking at is we're spending that money anyway and, and a lot more really. And I'm not sure that that the people that we're working with have the opportunity to to get the, the grant funding that we, we think we could get. And, and you might be right on that, but we're just, we truly believe after, after working with the 3A administrator that and talking to other counties, that we should be able to utilize them and get grants. And there's going to be a lot of grants coming through. That, that's something that we're seeing right now is that there's a grant for everything. But you just have to be very careful about how you apply for the grants and make sure that they aren't matching grants. There, there are a lot of grants out there right now that are 80, 20 that, you know, you pay 80% and, and the grant's only 20%. So you've got to be very careful about how you, you deal with the grants.
And I know Dale Luke is, is in favor of this.
Yes.
For, for his grant writing too on some things, so.
We'll go with a straw vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Yep.
I'm, I'm going to vote yes. Very hesitant with my, with my past experience with Region 3A. They just flat didn't do the job. I realized that they had a transition period of directions on it. But I'm, I'm going to say I'm going to be very hesitant with my yes.
Is this a yearly joining or is it a set so many years?
Yeah, it's, it's a yearly B, but they, we've actually been a member for, since we told them we weren't going to pay for it. They kept us on as a member. We were non-paying member, but.
But you weren't utilizing it either?
Yeah.
Is this in addition to the grant writing process in its current state or that will be?
No, this would replace it.
I will support it. But with the reality that we need evidence that it's been effective before next year. Actually, even before budget time.
And we'll have a councilman and a commissioner on that also. So that way we'll be able to tell.
If anybody can make it happen, it's Jim.
30 years ago, when I was commissioner, it was terribly run, just, but, you know, they've made improvements. But I had nightmares of the meetings I went to then, so it's much better now.
I would say the same thing three years ago. And that's kind of why we got out. So I'm obviously going to, I'm obviously going to be against it, but we will go ahead and for a favorable, favorable recommendation for the commissioners to proceed. All those in favor of them proceeding, please raise your right hand. And all those opposed, and let it be shown it was passed by a six to one vote.
Thank you. One of the other things we dealt with yesterday is we approved participating in the opioid settlement agreement. That's that national agreement that we opted in last year. And I'm not sure how much or if anything we'll get, but at least we're a part of that settlement right now. And talking to our attorney that he's not even sure that that'll go forward yet. But we, we did approve the participation to that. I think you're going to be talking about exclusive, excluded positions. And so I'll, I'll leave that for, for your discussion. We also have, Brandon has decided not to extend his contract with the highway where we have a contract with him that, for the highway and engineering position. So at this point, we're, we're in the process of changing those positions. We wanted to make sure that you knew, Wiss had provided us with salary ranges for the, the director, for the highway director. Low was 57,974, high was $74,077. And the midpoint salary for the highway superintendent or higher highway director was $64,415. And then on the salary range for the engineer is $87,723 as a low to $112,000 for a high for the midpoint salary of $97,470. The, the problem that we had as commissioners with this was that they used surrounding areas for these salaries instead of job description. So I, I'm asking that maybe that we work with, with the council to, to deal with that, to see what we really should be paying and where we.
And George, that's a full-time engineer salary. Are the commissioners confident that ultimately we need a full-time engineer?
No, we're not. And I think that's where we're going forward with another couple of options with, with that. But it's kind of a personnel issue and so we're not able to.
Do we need to amend the salary ordinance to support this? Or can we do that at another time if necessary?
I think we're going to have to do it another time.
It's not an elected position, so it can be, it can be adjusted or corrected or changed at any time during the cycle.
George, the engineer, have you ever considered about how, and not pay that engineer?
That's into consideration right now.
It's difficult to say more because it is a personnel issue.
Very good. Thank you, George.
Thank you. Was that all?
That's it?
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the 2022 salary ordinance. So this ordinance will be titled 2021-12. And this will be a reflection of the decision that was made about probation salaries. I, I'm going to ask that this has been vetted, looked at, relooked at, checked everything because it seems like every year there's something that gets transcribed wrong or.
I have to come back for additional in January. There was a couple items that were missed, but because we are past the budget. But this is set for now.
And these numbers are all reflective of what council has had discussion about as a unit, as a group, as a council, and have approved.
I make a motion to approve the salary ordinance 2021-12.
It's the one that, that because of the decision we made with how we were handling the COVID raises for probation. So it would be, it would be, it'd be the one without that added on to it. And that's the one, that's what I have right here. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do, Thor. When I was reading through this, I noticed that clear down toward the bottom, second paragraph from the bottom. Overtime for sourd employees shall be calculated by dividing employees' annual salary plus annual longevity. And I question why would we figure longevity into overtime? For their overtime rate. Because that, I believe that's an additional benefit. That's not a bi-weekly pay. That's one time a year pay. And I, I just saw that and questioned that. But they have to reach, they have to be here employed at a certain time every year to get that, correct?
So essentially it's in arrears. We're not changing it every time everyone comes to the anniversary. Are we paying it up this year? We did?
We did.
Refresh my memory, who made the motion, please?
I did.
Second. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to all those in favor. Please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same. Let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all council members present. I don't have anything on my agenda about excluded positions that you had spoke of. Is there someone here to talk on that? Or is that, who is presenting the information, please?
Well, I can, I've been working with Jen on this a little bit. Basically, what's happened is in 2019, WIS conducted an FLSA audit and classified all chief deputies and the jail matron as excluded. So we've got exempt, non-exempt, and then they added an excluded category. So previously, they were considered non-exempt and eligible for overtime and comp time. Now, as excluded for, we've got an ordinance 2019-11, these positions are not eligible for overtime and comp time. So right now, the commissioners are recommending an amendment to the ordinance to allow excluded positions to be eligible for overtime and comp time. You're dealing with chief deputies, jailed matron. You've got, one of the chief deputies is Jason Spencer. Is a deputy that does not get, they're getting paid for overtime. But there's, because they're putting in a lot of time, extra time. I think the only ones that really affects too much is Jason, the jail matron. And a few of the chief deputies have overtime because of having to cover for lunches and cover for vacations.
And George, just to confirm, the chief deputy to the sheriff does not receive eighty-five percent of the sheriff's salary?
That's about the only one that I know of. I think that's determined by the sheriff at the time that you're elected, right?
No.
Okay. But we still have, we have an ordinance that says, or 2019-11 says that they're excluded, does not get overtime or comp time.
So do you have a list of positions that you're requesting to us for us to unexclude?
Well, it would be just chief deputies, jail matron. And really, that's it. Chief deputies and jail matron.
So how many positions are those, please?
That would be eight, I think. I think it's eight positions.
I will accept this in a form of a motion.
Question, do we need to have our attorney write the resolution and confirm that we're within laws and guidelines?
Well, it's a WIS recommendation, so we can-
We can do what we want with it.
I'll second the motion. Motion and a second. Any further discussion, please?
So how much more overtime, however you want to call it, is just going to create on their budgets and salaries?
Anymore, because we've been operating as exempt and non-exempt and not using excluded at this time.
Jason, would you like to come forward and just talk about your case in particular, and what it really means to your salary and how it affects your job? To give that perspective?
And while Jason's coming, if I may, Mr. Chair, this was a minor line in our resolution to follow WIS recommendations as our policy. And we won with policy as it had been practiced rather than the new ordinance.
Yep.
Hi, Jason. I'm sure you're the sheriff's department. This was kind of an oversight. I was, we were contacted, I guess we didn't realize that there was a third option on this. I've always been treated as non-exempt when I took this position. So therefore, it was an oversight, I think, on everybody involved. And when they entered everything into the new timekeeping system, this is how this was discovered. So I've been as a non-exempt employee. I think I've been, even with new ordinance, we didn't realize, no, and we didn't. So that's how it came up. As far as my job goes, I'm available 24/7. I have to be. My RFPs. I have to be available to come in weekends or nights or anything else. It's like, we had the incident last week. So when it gets bad out, we're shorthanded. And we still have to go out and cover everything, what we're going on. When it was icy the other day, it's, I still have a job to do, whether it's in an office or helping the guys out on the road. So it's no different from what I'm doing. So that's my stance on it. It wasn't any chief deputy, and then through the county, complaining about wages. I don't want that to be misinterpreted. It wasn't, it was just a misunderstanding that was brought to by, because we're changing time systems. But wouldn't change time systems, I don't think. So I have been receiving overtime. Our department doesn't get comp time. We went away from that a couple of years ago because it was pretty much a pain. It was more difficult than what it was worth. So the pay was easier because the guys were built up not to be able to take it due to staffing. And then I think we ran into a comp time payout issue one year, and we just abolished it with our department. It's easier just to get the guys the overtime. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Jason.
I didn't have a motion. I need a second. I didn't hear your motion.
Who had remind?
The chair made the motion.
I did not.
Well, can I move that we have an ordinance amendment written that we will later approve that deals with excluded employees allowing or comp time or overtime pay? This is the issue the Personnel Committee chose not to bring because we didn't have a recommendation, thought the whole council should discuss it together.
Yep.
Did your motion say any later term?
That the motion will be written, and then we'll approve it. The ordinance amendment will be written.
So it won't take effect until that happens?
We can make it retroactive to the first pay period in January.
Or we could just eliminate the excluded employee verbiage out of the WIS's recommendation on the ordinance number 2019-11. And then that would take care of it all today. If, that's another way that we could do it.
My question is that, and are we saying that those people are non-exempt? Because we've got this category that we were told to have.
That's correct. We've been moving from excluded to non-exempt.
Jen's saying you can't do that. Do you want to come up then?
Thank you, Jennifer Shinnberry, HR Director. The option, or the two options basically that you have, according to my understanding of what WIS is guiding us, is that to either stick with the ordinance, you can't change, they are saying that these positions are excluded, so we can't change that. That's according to the FLSA guidelines, these positions are excluded. You can, which means they're not eligible for overtime or comp time. You can, though, as a blanket statement, say that you want to veer from that and make all excluded positions eligible for overtime or comp time. That is legal and okay to do. But you can't change their status, per se. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And it wouldn't affect exempt. Exempt positions can still not be eligible for overtime and comp time. And non-exempt can still be the way they are legally. They're eligible for overtime and comp time. But you have to make a decision what to do with excluded positions.
And these eight positions we talked about earlier are the only positions we're referring to?
Correct. Every job description has on it now whether they're exempt, non-exempt, or excluded. So everybody is designated as that already. And that was something that WIS did and you approved already.
I guess my line's going to, are there any future positions that would be included in this that we wouldn't want them to be, that we would want them to be exempt? Would that occur, or we would deal on that as it comes?
I think that that would be involved in writing the job description with WIS's input to ensure that it ended up in one of the other two categories.
Because you just sent out one for the highway director. It's, I didn't read it yet, but it stated in there whether that is exempt or non-exempt.
Correct, and that position's exempt.
So every one that you're going to send from now on is going to have that in.
Correct.
So we shouldn't have to do this again, other than the eight.
Correct. I mean, you could change your minds at a later date, but it needs to be, yeah, a blank, like I said, a blanket statement. You can't pick one excluded position to be eligible and another one not to. It should be all or nothing. And my understanding from the email from WIS is that excluded positions include elected officials, anybody that they appoint, so chief deputies, and certain staff such as the jail matron, because they're appointed by an elected official. So those are the positions that would be considered excluded.
I'm reluctant to approve an amendment on the fly. I would rather we take time to write it appropriately and then approve it at the next meeting. That's why the motion is as it is.
And the amendment, I think, would just simply state that excluded positions are eligible for overtime and comp time, which is traditionally how they've been handled. My understanding, anyway, I haven't, from what people are telling me, that's always how, they've always been treated as non-exempt. So in practice, that's how we've been doing things. We just, when you passed that ordinance in 2019, I don't think anybody really caught it. Those positions are now considered excluded and not eligible.
I think the department heads have been able to determine whether they want to pay or not on comp time, or extra pay.
And I think that ultimately needs to be a part of the amendment.
Right.
So we should process what that looks like and bring an amendment for approval.
But it should be everybody the same, rather than department heads.
So have we already been paying overtime to these eight?
Yes.
Okay. So we've been doing it all along. We just need to change the amendment, or however you want to say it, to exclude, or to have those eight just continue the way they are, basically.
And if that's the way you choose, then they would be treated like non-exempt versus exempt.
And this would affect anybody else but those eight?
Correct.
For the lack of hearing a second, maybe if you would make your motion again, it would add clarity to someone being willing to second it.
I got a question, Chairman.
Yes.
Jason, you have been receiving overtime? Okay, I thought you hadn't. Sure, okay.
This is the third time that it came up since when I was chief deputy and now sheriff. One of the reasons that we, each deputy's position got overtime was they weren't above eighty-five percent.
And I understand that, okay.
I make a motion that we write an amendment to the 2019-11 ordinance to clarify our position on excluded employees and to make the policy consistent across all excluded employees and their department heads.
Would you be willing to include in that the verbiage that it will go on from this point as it has been treated? So there's no waiting period for that to kick in. Anything happens now, it's going to be essentially the way, I mean, even though we have a policy or an ordinance, when we don't follow our own policy, our new policy or our new method that we operate on is your policy.
And I would add that we will continue with these excluded employees according to practice until that amendment is made. Not policy or ordinance, but as practice.
Now, may I have a second?
I'll second this.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same, let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all council members present. Are we caught up on our minutes? Or do we have more than one month? We didn't have a November meeting, so are we looking at just approving in October? It's the only one that's unapproved at this point. Can I show on the minutes, in case anybody forgets if they were here or not, that you all were here? So anyone's algorithmic moment or emotion to approve these minutes, please? There, your second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes from our October 5, 2021 meeting, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, and let it be shown it was passed unanimously with all council members present. Councilman Barrett?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Western? Councilman Algarbrake?
George, you got a short update on the jail project?
Yeah, where we are right now, we're looking at contracts. We've got two contracts that are being examined. We've got one with BW and one with Elevatus. We should be, hopefully, we have everything all ready to go by the end of the month here in our next meeting. But everything's going forward. Elevatus is working on the 1263 for us, which is a House bill that requires us to have public hearings and to also contact all the surrounding counties to make sure that they're not, that they don't want to go in with a regional deal with us. So once that gets done, then we've got a lot of the legalities out of the way. And Elevatus has already talked to the sheriff a little bit about what kind of a layout we're going to start on that to actually do architectural drawings. We're getting there. Still about 23 months out.
We're getting there. Thank you. I have nothing.
Councilman Warner?
We, the county changed the voting districts. Is that right, the council? So they're not on our website, the county website, or anything? Okay, okay, thank you.
And I would just note that this is the 80th anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor. And we still do have some World War II veterans who are surviving. And we still do have some World War II veterans who are surviving in Whitley County, and I would honor them today.
Vice Chair Wheeler. The only thing that I would like to say is I see a lot of our department heads and employees here today. We appreciate you guys coming. I appreciate you guys coming to the meetings. I appreciate your input. I appreciate tremendously the job that you have done for the county over the course of the last year. We look forward to another really great year next year. So thank you for that, and thank you for being involved, and thank you for really being diligent with the county citizens, taxpayers, or tax dollars. So we appreciate that. Meeting's adjourned.
I would have lost on the over-under. I was going to, I thought it was going to take us more than two hours.